Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet. I'm president of the Speedway Town Council. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Today is February 27th, 2023, and it is 7:00 PM. First off, go ahead and rise and say the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead and introduce our council on far right, our town manager, Grant Kleinenz.
Good evening.
Next to Grant is Councillor Eileen Fisher.
Good evening.
Next to my right is Councillor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
Far left is our attorney, Bob Clutter.
Hello.
Next to Bob is Philip Faust, our town clerk treasurer. Welcome first for your first meeting.
Thanks, sir.
Next to Philip is Councillor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
And next to myself is Councillor Betty Gary-Pedego.
Hello there.
Next is the approval of minutes of January 23rd, 2023 meeting. Those meetings or those minutes have been previously presented to you. If there's no changes or correction, I'll approve them as submitted. Hearing no changes, they're approved. Next up is special event requests for 2023 community parade. Gina, welcome. And who's with you?
This is Christina Young.
Okay.
Hello. I have a proposal to bring to you before you that I've been working on for a few years and which I think would benefit the town of Speedway. It's a hometown parade. Speedway has had many parades in the past, but nothing quite like what we're proposing. Three women, Christina Young, Lain Warner, and Melissa Cook, who couldn't be here, and myself, we have formed a not-for-profit committee, and we're hoping to bring a new tradition to our town that will hopefully last for many years to come. We're proposing to have this parade be on the morning of Saturday, September 23rd. That's the Saturday before homecoming or before the week of homecoming. This is a great opportunity to showcase the amazing things our town and schools are doing. It fits perfectly with the traditions of homecoming because it's a time for our community to demonstrate pride and support for our schools and hopefully return each year for the parade. We would like the parade to start at Lot 9 of the IMS at 21st Street in Georgetown, then head west on 21st to Wynton Avenue, and then travel north and end at the high school parking lot. This is a route that takes our hometown parade through the neighborhoods of Speedway. We are requiring that any parade entry has a driver who is 21 years or older, and everyone who is included in the parade signs a waiver. Our hope and vision is to begin the parade with a grand marshal, someone who represents our unique town, followed by our high school's fabulous marching band. We want to include small business owners so they can promote their business, invite youth athletics and clubs to showcase their achievements from all ages, and then end with our police and fire personnel and vehicles. We have the approval and support from IMS and the school superintendent to have our staging areas be on their properties, and I have met with the town departments, including fire, police, and streets, and they have approved this idea with no concerns. So I respectfully request to receive the town council's support and to consider waiving the event fees. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. I guess at this point in time, I'll open up for any questions for Gina concerning the parade.
I'll make a motion, actually. We approved the special event request for 2023 community parade as presented.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Any discussion now concerning the parade?
Gina, you've approached a few councillors about this previously. You've got a lot of passion for that. Why is that? Maybe you want to talk about your history with a town parade.
I just think our small town is so unique, and we have so many great things to offer. And especially, my heart's with the schools. My husband is in the school corporation, and I am a former teacher as well. And I just see so many great things going on with the schools, and I want to be able to highlight that and showcase that for families who may not have kids in school anymore. So this parade will be a great way to do that, but also our small businesses in town and just the people who make up this town and run it. I think we have a lot of great people that, you know, we don't get to do a lot of things that are real positive and for the community.
No, that's great. I think it's really admirable that you're going to be sending the parade through the residential areas, and it would be nice, you know, later in the years, we send them through different areas around our community, because a lot of people go up and down Main Street, but they really don't see the rest of the town. And that would be wonderful to have an event like that through our town, and I'd definitely support it. Any other questions or thoughts? Hearing none, then I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of the parade as presented by Gina signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you very much for coming tonight. Next on the agenda is a motion to approve the amendment to the ground lease between the town of Speedway and Merrill Brothers. Grant, can you give us information on that?
So this evening, actually a couple of weeks ago, we were approached by Merrill Brothers. We have a ground lease with them that was put into effect in 2007. It's a 30-year lease. They operate out of that site, having trucks that have sewage hauled in, different types of sewage that we don't necessarily treat. They pre-treat that and then dump their effluent that's up to our standards into our system. We have a wholesale rate with them and charge them an annual fee. What they want to do is, and there is a drawing attached on the table, they want to expand the apron, the concrete apron, to allow an additional truck to unload at their facility. They have kind of a clog in their operations a little bit. This will improve their efficiency. It will not, however, increase the load that they give to our plant, won't change the standards that we have. It's very explicit in the addendum to the ground lease. So we have discussed this with staff. Bob did this addendum, reviewed this, and we would recommend approval of this tonight so that we can get it signed, get it back to them. Merrill Brothers will have to get a building permit and any other required permit from Indianapolis if it affects their project. I'm just not sure how that's going to work out. It shouldn't, but they will have to get all those permits and go through that process.
Sure. Okay, do I have a motion for the approval of the amendam for the ground lease?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve the addendum to the ground lease between the town of Speedway and Merrill Brothers as presented.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Let's all open it up for any discussion. Any questions for Grant in relationship to this lease improvement? You know the timeline on that improvement.
They would like to get it done by the summer, but once again, they got to go through that building permit process. Indianapolis does take somewhere between five and seven weeks for that if they have to go that route. I think they want to start construction once the weather breaks.
Okay.
And they're just pouring concrete. They can pretty much do that at any time.
So just to be clear, this is not needing additional land, it's just producing a ramp?
It's on the footprint of the property that we currently lease to them.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Grant? If not, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the addendum to the ground lease between the town of Speedway and Merrill Brothers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is approval of the water usage information agreement with Citizens Energy Group. Philip?
Thank you. Citizens reached out to us about almost a month ago with this proposed information agreement. This covers customers who are inside our sewer area but are not within our water coverage area. And so in order to bill those customers correctly, we have to get information from citizens. In the past, doing some research on this, we did have an agreement back in the 90s that expired in 2000. Doing a comparison to that, this appears to be a better overall cost structure for us. And more importantly, though, after that agreement expired, it does not appear that we had an agreement in place, and the rate that they were billing us at would be more than cut in half by using this agreement. So I would recommend it for your adoption.
Great.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the water usage information agreement with Citizens Energy Group as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a second. I'll open up for any discussion for Philip.
How long would this agreement be in effect for this time around?
That's unfortunately only for a year with the options for renewals.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the water usage information agreement with Citizens Energy Group, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is approval of selection for requests for proposal for landscape maintenance. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So if you're unaware, we do have a private contractor that cares for the landscape, maintains it, updates it, puts mulch down, replaces plants and flowers based on the seasons, replaces those if they die, picks up trash, et cetera. Basically, on Crawfordsville Road from the interstate through High School Road, all the way through the roundabout and out to the viaduct east of IMS. Also, the contract covers Main Street from the roundabout to 10th Street to the maintenance of all of that landscaping, the trees, the stormwater beds, the plants there, et cetera. We've been using Vibrant Outdoors for years. They have been an excellent provider, very responsive. They've done a good job. We did put this out for an RFP in late November, early December. We received those, have reviewed these. Nick Raymond Landscaping was one of the two submitters on the RFP. Their price was about $12,600 lower than Vibrant Outdoors. It does cover the same territory and amount of landscaping. They understand. We had a very specific list of duties and steps in that, including traffic control, because that's not our road. Indianapolis requires that any contractor working there has to have certain traffic control. So we've talked to Nick Raymond Landscaping. They can do the job. They're a good company. We've worked with them before on other projects, and they've not let us down. We've had an issue. They've responded or corrected. So we would recommend that we change this contract to Nick Raymond Landscaping, saving about $12,600 per year for a three-year contract. That's about $36,000 that we'll save over the term of that contract. We have not bid this out for a while. It's been probably four or five years. I think it's a good practice to do this every three or four years to see what's out there. So with that, I'll answer any questions you might have, but I would recommend approval to Nick Raymond. After your approval, we'll request a contract. We'll have Bob review that. If you'll authorize me to sign that, we'll make sure that's taken care of. We do have a 30-day notice to the other provider. We'll probably try to get that notice out by March 1 and have Nick start probably on April 1.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Yes, sir. I'll make a motion, Mr. President, that we approve Nick Raymond Landscaping to handle the landscape maintenance for the town of Speedway as presented by our town manager.
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. So I'll open it up for questions for Grant in relationship to the landscaping. You know how long Nick Raymond's been around or in business?
Well over 10 years. He has several clients already in Speedway. Does their landscaping? Have not heard complaints from them. Our staff knows him from other, some of his contracts because they work with those people as well. He has a good reputation, so.
So he's not an unknown entity?
No. And like I said, we've used him probably on three or four different smaller projects over the years, including town hall, landscape maintenance, and grass.
You know, does that maintenance contract entail replacement of those?
It does. If something dies or they're supposed to water them in hot times, if they do die, they will have to replace those individual plants. Doesn't happen often, but it does happen from time to time.
And then he also has the ability to replace the, I know we had a sprinkler system in there that was hit by a couple.
Yeah, he's aware of that system. He understands what it's need to operate and repair it.
Okay.
That's, I don't believe that's a concern.
Okay. Any other?
We have had it hit before, but it doesn't happen all the time.
Yeah.
Occasionally. Without it, we'd have to water a lot more to keep it looking good.
For sure. Okay, is there any other questions for Grant? Now I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on the approval of a selection of the request for proposal for landscaping maintenance for Nick Raymond Landscaping Incorporated. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
I will abstain.
So motion carries, or with one abstention.
Mr. President, I could explain my abstention, just to be transparent. The contract, Nick Raymond has a contract with a part-time employer that I work with. Therefore, that would exclude me from a vote on this this evening.
Okay. Okay. Next on our agenda is ordinance 1371. It's an ordinance authorizing the town of Speedway, Indiana, to issue its taxable economic development revenue note, series 2023, Will Shaw Hotel Project. The loan, the proceeds therefore are to HE Speedway Owner LLC in approving and authorizing other actions in respect therefore. This is a proposed first reading. There'll be two readings on this. Grant?
Yeah, so I have a PowerPoint, Bill, if you could turn that PowerPoint on, please. So go ahead and advance the slide if you would, Bill. Thank you. So the proposed loan as included in this ordinance, as well as in the attached escrow agreement and loan agreement, is in the, proposed to be in the amount of $2.5 million from the town's Gateway Tax Increment Finance District, which covers the area in and around Main Street, was created 20 years ago when we started those redevelopment projects and opportunities, and was created for the purpose of furthering economic development on that side of, on that side of town. Since that time, we've expanded those. We've added a couple of additional TIFs. For instance, Founder Square is another TIF. But this TIF was created to help and assist with that redevelopment of downtown. I believe that's been very successful. We've had hundreds of millions of dollars worth of private investment, as well as anywhere near $100 million in town investment in sewer, water, storm sewer, road, et cetera. So these funds will come from that source that is managed by our Redevelopment Commission, the SRC. We are, we have been working with them on this agreement. The loan that is proposed is not a forgivable loan or a grant. It is a loan in every sense of the word. It is a short-term loan. I would call it or classify it as a construction loan. The loan will be for the period of the construction. It has a term of two years with an additional option for a third year. If construction continues or languishes or what have you, if they can't get it done in that two-year period, there is a third-year option for that loan. The loan will be held in an escrow account with US Bank. The previous clerk treasurer chose that bank. We've had a long relationship with them, and according to that escrow agreement, those funds will be held there. They will be released only upon the proper application for those funds from that developer for the development of that project. We will review those invoices to make sure that they are putting in the ground what we believe we are putting into the ground. So that money will never be in their hands directly. And furthermore, what I would say is that this loan is contingent. It is contingent upon the owner of the project, the Will Shaw Hotel Project, them obtaining their senior financing. Because they will have approximately $20 to $25 million in senior debt, our loan will be a second position to that loan, but we are in a collateralized position that will be backed by the real estate of that, at that location. Once again, the disbursements are only after the closure of their loan. So if their loan takes another month or six weeks, we will close upon this loan, once they've closed on that loan, and set up that account, transfer that money, and that process can begin. Already talked about that. The loan for 24 months does have an interest rate attached to those. The first interest rate is 5% for that first year. It increases to 6.5% in year two. If the third-year option is called for, it goes to 8%. On the next slide, Bill, please. I wanted to give an overview of that company that we're making the loan to. Hotel Equities is a member of this HE Speedway Owner LLC. That group is taking out the loan. Hotel Equities and 33 Degrees are the partners, the development partners for that loan. Hotel Equities, we've talked to them a couple of times here in the council meetings and asked them questions about this process. It has been ongoing since September of 2021, finally culminating in this point where we believe we are close to finalizing that. They're a full-service hotel management group with over 250 hotels across the country and in Canada. In fact, they have, I believe, 10 in Indiana, the Indiana market. So they are familiar not only with our market, but also with our brand. So I've listed their, 43% of their project is our Marriott. We have a Marriott hotel courtyard by Marriott here. 30% is Hilton. Our hotel is a Hilton Tapestry. That's the flag associated with that agreement. 15% others, and 12% IHG. More than 23,000 guest rooms is what they manage. They have hotels all over the country. They have a good track record. They are a good firm, and they know how to manage, build, and manage hotels. Next slide, Bill. So back to the income. So this money that we are loaning to them, once again, it's a loan. We are loaning that money to them with those rental rates, 5, 6.5, and 8. I know Philip Faust, our new clerk treasurer, ran some numbers. Based on that amount and those interest rates, the town can expect, if the third-year option is put into play, $487,500 in interest income. If it only goes through year one and two, we're at $287,500. So this money will actually make money for us, but will help the development move forward and get their senior debt closed. So I wanted to point that out because we get about 4.5%, I believe, in our money market and different accounts that we use. That's fairly standard. Actually, I think that's increased over the past year or so, but we are going to get a better interest rate for that. We're not a bank, but we're trying to use these monies in an aggressive fashion to help this project move forward. Next slide, Bill. So the other part I wanted to put up there was just another look at those revenues. Once the hotel is built and constructed, currently it receives about $33,000 per year based on the improvements that were put into place and the value of the real estate. Once it's constructed, you can see there at the bottom line, when complete, the hotel will generate an estimated $257,472 in additional TIF revenues. When you add those two together, you're talking about $280,000. The other side of that project was the Will Shaw Apartments. They also pay property tax that can be used to retire this debt, and we believe that coverage is sufficient to cover the debt service on this loan. Once again, short-term loan. If the project gets completed, we then reap the benefit of having a fully functioning, fully assessed operational hotel on that property, which we believe anchors downtown, benefits every development that we've ever done on Main Street, and also benefits, will ne'er to the benefit of IMS, Motor Speedway. Having this type of a hotel and this type of a product in our community, we have fantastic hotels now. We don't have a Hilton Tapestry in our community. So I think the discussions that we've had over the past several months, really over the past 18 months, is how can we help them? How can we further this development ultimately to get it to the finish line? I think everybody wants to see a hotel there. I know the council is frustrated by the hulking dinosaur that is there. I know that's the way it's described often. We want to see it done and finished, and I think that that will be the best and highest use for that site. One of the other questions I've been asked, we've seen some questions on Facebook, there have been engineering assessments of that property. It is, all the steel, the concrete is structurally sound. There are some minor areas with a little bit of rust that will need to be cleaned off, cleaned up, and then some of the coverings on the outside of the elevator shaft will have to be removed and replaced. The rest of it, though, has been certified structurally sound, and that's one of the conditions of this loan, as well as the loan with their senior lender. So the process, what is the process like? Tonight, this is simply a first reading. If it approves, is approved by the council, it will move forward to a proposed second reading on March 13. Prior to that, the EDC and SRC have some business to adopt. They are working on that for, I believe, the 5:00 PM and 6:00 PM on March 13. If the council then approves the full loan, that will wait and be finalized when they finally secure their financing. The other part of the timeline is closing on the financing and construction. The goal is to close over here in the springtime. That could be in four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks. There's some processes that are being worked through. Construction would hope to be started late in the spring, May, June. Those are the goals at this point. As we continue this process, we'll learn more, and if things can be done earlier, we will do that earlier, definitely. So with that, I'll answer any questions that the council might have about the loan agreement, the process, the funding, et cetera. One other comment I want to make, because I know I was asked about this as well. Previous clerk treasurer was involved in this process, was a part of that recommendation to make the loan because we had those disposable dollars that cannot be used on other parks improvements or road improvements or sewer or water improvements. They are to be used for economic development opportunities. He was in favor of that. I know Philip has come on, has been reviewing those documents, is working with Crowe, our financial advisor, to look a little deeper into the pro forma, some of the other documents. We hope to have that final review and analysis done shortly. We don't believe that there's going to be any concern with that, but I wanted to bring that out because I know that may be asked as well.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 1371 so that we can have discussion on this.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. So I'll open it up for questions for Grant in relationship to this.
Grant, I've asked some of these questions of you and our attorney and others, but just want to make sure that we do this publicly so that the rest public. Why is the town council hearing this? I know that this has been part of the redevelopment commissions.
Right.
They've been working. They've been working hard on this. We've been aware of it, but why, why is the council approving this?
Any debt approved by any arm of the town must be approved by the town council, correct, Bob?
That's correct.
So SRC is an arm of the town. It's one of our boards and commissions that has authority to approve these type of loans as well, but the town council must also approve.
And what happens through this ordinance if this loan does not go through with the current mortgage company they're working with?
It, it will, it will not go into effect. It will kind of be held, for lack of a better term, in escrow or reserve until they do secure that financing. So if that takes a month, if it takes six weeks, this will not go into effect until they've closed, and then we will close on our mortgage as well.
So we're not releasing our funds until they close?
Absolutely.
Okay. And we're insuring, being insured by a title company?
There, there will be a title insurance. I know we've had several, I don't have the name of that firm at this point. Part of that is, is they haven't done all that closing documentation. I believe they know who they're working with, but I, I can get that information for you. Having the proper title insurance really secures our second position on that, and short of that, we, we don't have any guarantee. So that's a very important, nice to have a closing professional on our, on our town council.
Absolutely.
So just a question on process. So we're hearing an ordinance, so as we do other ordinances, if we approve this this evening, we would have to also hear a second ordinance?
Yes.
And between now and, and then, there's additional activity. I think you referenced some of that.
Yeah.
So there's some things that could change between now and, and the, the next time we would hear this, I think 13th of
March 13th.
Of March.
If something substantive changes over that period of time, we would have to point that out, make amendments to the ordinance. There's a process for that, friendly amendments, and we'll bring that before the council at that time.
Councilor Fisher outlined a couple of items, but what else is this subject to? I mean, in terms of, in, in relationship to the developer, Hotel Equities, which we've met several times and
Right.
become comfortable with them, but what else is this subject to with them?
Well, it's, it's mainly subject to them securing that financing and closing on that financing. Once that is done, we can then close on this loan with them. The money will be sent to the escrow account. The, the other parts that it's contingent upon is the cost study, the, the appraised value of that property. Those are all things that are in process right now and should be, those dominoes should be falling over the next several weeks. So the appraisal and the cost analysis are, are two of the big parts. And then everything will have to get ordered and placed, so that this is a fairly lengthy process over the next couple of months.
You mean materials?
Yeah, materials have to get ordered. Whatever they don't have on, because remember, some of this is stored, not locally necessarily, but there's some of that that was stored, purchased several years ago when the project started.
And our other option at this point, if this doesn't come together, other options redevelopment's considered or could consider are
Yeah, so we could look for another, another developer who either had the money available or had financing already. We could foreclose on the property, file all of those lawsuits to begin that process. One of the things we've talked about over and over again over the past year and, year and a half, as I've been here, is that is a lengthy process as well, somewhere between, Bob, I think we've talked about anywhere from 18 months to two or two and a half years, and that ties that property up, and you can do nothing with another developer who might come in. I, I think that's why the town has held restraint, because we do have a developer who is interested and have been working with them since September of 2021.
Why do you have confidence in that developer? Hotel Equities?
Yeah, so, so I've met with them. We have reviewed documentation. We've reviewed their plans. It's not just a hotel. It's kind of an amenities center, meaning they'll have a full service restaurant there. They'll have meeting space as well. And it, to me, it fits with what we're trying to do on Main Street. We're trying to bring more traffic for the restaurants, the retailers, the different businesses there. This also provides one of our biggest stakeholders, in fact, three of our largest stakeholders, Allison, Praxair and IMS, an opportunity for them to host people, have teams stay Praxair and, and others bring in prospective customers and, you know, to house them in that facility will, will leave a great impression and, and really show what, what Speedway's about. That's the heart of our community, Main Street, and IMS is the heart of the community. So having this on that corner, to me, makes a lot of sense. And the town's also invested thousands of hours on this, staff hours, consultant hours. I, I know I've spent hundreds of hours on it over the past couple of years or 20 months.
Yeah.
And it's, we vetted it. We have vetted it to the point where I think we feel very, very confident that they can get the financing they need and, and can also operate that hotel. They wouldn't have 259 other hotels operating if they weren't good at what they did.
Grant, could you let the public know, I mean, Hotel Equity has invested into that property to clear up all the current, you know, lawsuits and everything else and clear the deck, more or less, for this transition?
The, the biggest thing they cleared was a four and a half million dollar mechanic's lien on the construction that we see there today. That was held by Wilhelm Construction. That was filed. In order to get financing, that had to be cleared. That, that helped the cause. So they went ahead and from their dollars paid four and a half million dollars to clear that off. In addition to that, they've paid nearly half a million in fees for appraisals, cost studies, other application fees, as well as, they've spent thousands of hours with their attorneys, their staff, reviewing this, looking into it, vetting their project. So they, they put probably five to five and a half million dollars worth of
Yeah.
investment already in that project.
I think, you know, it's not slight, but in this past two years, you know, we have all experienced inflation, you know, from gas going up, raw materials going up. And the same thing has happened within the industry, the building industry. And so, you know, a lot of people, that's why these cost estimates, so it's, it's been a moving target, especially with the interest rates going up, cost of money. Everything has been going up on, on this target. And I'm happy to say that they've still stayed in there with us on this project.
And I know that's been one of those issues that has affected their securing that financing is the changes in the market from interest rates to cost of construction. I do think one of the advantages they have there is that steel was purchased in 2016, 2017
Right.
At the cost in, at that time, it's still good. Today, that might cost rather than four and a half million, it might have been eight million.
Yeah.
Or might have had a two-year lead time. So there's some advantages to, to working on that project as it sits. Plus, the town does have some bonds out on that, on that property secured by the developer previously, and the Willshaw Apartments secure that debt as well. So there's a lot of advantages to go ahead and, and continuing with that hotel.
Okay. Since this expenditure, I want to go ahead and open up to the public. If you have any comments, I want to keep it to one minute. Let's, let's put it, start out that hopefully you can say, but I would, I definitely want to get comments from the public. Please come forward, state your name and address, and, and we can listen to it, any comments that you want to state.
James Long, and I'm at 1617 Cord Street. Got a quick question on what performance is related to this financing? Is there, are there gateways that they have to achieve to break into this pool of money?
So the, the loan document as approved has construction to start in May. That may change based on what happens with their financing, but that was the concept, to get them, get them constructing in May, get the financing closed in March, so that everything could continue to move forward. Because of the contingency status of the loan, if that doesn't happen until June, that will, that target will potentially move.
Is it possible to gate half to begin with and gate a portion once something is actually accomplished?
I think I see your question.
Maybe I don't understand.
So the, this is actually reimbursement. So it's once work has already been completed, then, then they can request some of those escrow funds are dispersed and they have to be approved and sound by the, signed by the town before they can even be submitted for reimbursement.
So it's like a draw?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Sorry about that, misunderstood that.
Thank you, James. Anybody else like to speak to the council?
My name is John Lamb. I've been a resident of this town since I was born in 1994. I purchased a home at 2009 Allison Avenue in the fall of 2019. I, you noted that this property is collateral, collateralized in, in this potential loan. I was hoping that somebody could speak more about that. And then also, for anybody who doesn't really understand what's going on here, let me see if I understand. There is a questionable business entity requesting a private loan to go get a $2.3 million mortgage. That is about as creative as it gets, in my opinion, as far as financing, and I think that's a gamble and a bad bet. How long would the property sit in escrow after said company fails to secure other financing? Like the, to the tune of like $20 million or something like that? Those are my concerns.
So, so what I would say is if, once again, if they never receive their financing, the town will never make the loan. So the funds won't go into the loan, to the, to the escrow account until that closing happens. That's the protection that we have. No one has access to those town dollars until they have access to their senior debt.
Bob, do you concur?
I do.
The other stipulation I heard was that construction would actually have to start. The escrow monies are there.
Yeah.
Or the monies are put in escrow, but they have to draw on those based on accomplishing construction.
And the escrow agreement is set up for the draws to go to the contractor and not the
Yes, the, yes. That's, that's another important aspect of it is so the, the draws actually go to the vendor or contractor themselves rather than to the borrower. So whoever it is that performed some certain construction activity, they're the ones getting paid directly.
Which would prevent what happened
Yes.
previously where liens were piling up.
Correct.
Okay.
Just state your name and address.
Billy McLeod, 1820 North Wickham Avenue. Something that the gentleman that spoke before me, I heard, overheard him say. So if this money's taken out of the town's account and put into that escrow account, we're not making any money on that, on, like, making interest money on that, correct?
I, I believe that's correct. If it's in the escrow, it earns escrow funds that go to the project.
Yeah, but once the money is placed in escrow, the interest on the loan starts accruing immediately.
Okay. And then the other follow-up to that would be, so we get into another situation like we had with Loftus Robinson, where they spend all their money and don't complete this project. What happens? What's our, what's our recourse on that? How do we, how do we get that money back to the town that, yeah, obviously we've paid for and we deserve to have that, have that clarity beforehand, I believe?
So that process, and I'm, it would have to be foreclosed upon, just like we would have to do now if we wanted to just end the, end the project. There would have to be a foreclosure process that takes 18 to 24 months and would be expensive. I think a lot of times we say only lawyers get rich from those types of lawsuits.
And, and it would be the primary lender that would be, you know, pushing the foreclosure because they've obviously got a lot more invested into it, 20-plus million dollars, whatever they're
The other part, these are, when you say town dollars, these are actually, they are town dollars and they are TIF dollars, but they're not, they're not property taxes coming out of my home or your home. They're coming out of the redevelopment area that, that, that provides tax dollars to
Which we spend, we spend money there, which ultimately does go into that, correct?
Correct, absolutely.
Right.
But it's the business, businesses paying their property taxes that's collected by the TIF, not the individuals. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Next urgent, 5045 West 14th Street. So to clarify, HE Speedway Owners LLC is a new LLC, correct? Is, and so part of that LLC is this Hotel Equities company. Who else is involved in that LLC? What is their role? What is their financial interest? Because I have very hard time having a private company come to us as a town asking for a loan. I think it sets a very bad precedent to future companies as well as honestly a slap in the face to those companies that have done things right, who have put the money in, secured the, the loan or loans that they needed to, to build their properties up. So why should we be doing this? That's my question. Why should we be lending them this money? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just offer a, a quick comment on that. So Hotel Equities and 33 Degrees are the development partnership. That's who, that's who's in the deal. They do have to get the previous developer out of the deal, and they have agreements with them to do that, to, to pay whatever they had to pay to, for money spent or time spent, et cetera. They have an agreement, a private agreement with that company to get out of the project. One thing I've said to the council several times, Hotel Equities does not have a problem here. We have the problem. We have a hotel that was started and has never been finished. That hotel sits there for another two or three years, it's no good. We're the ones that have the problem. We entered into the agreement with the first developer. This Hotel Equities is coming in trying to finance this. We are trying to offer this as a, an olive branch to get it across that, that finish line, and they're the ones that are putting in the 20-plus million dollars. We're about 10% of that cost, give or take. I, I don't know if that answers your questions.
Well, I, I see basically it's the town trying to get themselves out of a bad situation that we, see we as the town entered into, so we're throwing good money after bad to try to get out of this situation is what it looks like, is what it sounds like. But that only answers part of it. Who else is the other part of that new LLC that was formed? That's the other part of the question.
I don't know that I can answer that. I, I really don't know those two partners or who I know is in that LLC.
If I can comment on, I have asked, and I think our next meeting, I have no reason why this is going to pass. I think we all know, I mean, it's obvious, right? Or we wouldn't be having this for a first reading, announcing it for a second. It's obvious. But they are not going to have my support unless someone from that group is here to talk to us and to the public, because we're giving them or offering them 2.5 million. And I think it is, it, it doesn't fare well with me that they're not here tonight to answer these questions that they should be answering and not us. That's, that's where I'm at with this. And to say this is our problem, it has become our problem, and I think it's our problem because of the person that developed or the group that developed this before, the group that we're, we're working with now. I think that this group we're working with is a good group to work with, but I will tell everyone, I have my doubts whether they will make this happen. But I think this loan will help them get to the point of what they need to be, and that's why I suggested, and I, I don't know if demanding is the right word, I don't think that's the right word to use, but they need to be at our meeting, March 13th, to answer questions that we have and that you all have to.
I, I appreciate and agree with a lot of your comments, Councilor Lindsay. I, I think the, the second reading in two weeks is definitely, we need to have them here. They could have been here tonight as well. Were they asked to be here this evening?
No, they were not.
Yeah, probably should have been.
Because this is a first reading. If it didn't go any further, if, if it does go further, we, we can invite them to speak. We've spoken to them before. We've had them in at least two council meetings, I believe. I, I understand what you're saying, Councilor Lindsay.
And, and to sit here and say we've not talked to them, we have. As I'm sure you know, we always meet before our council meetings. We've talked with them. Our attorneys have talked to them. Grant's talked with them. Todd's talked to them. We're having ongoing conversations. This is not something we dreamed up tonight to bring forward for this loan. This has been a long conversation we've had. But if they want to be a good partner with this town, I think they need to be standing at that podium to answer questions that we have and that the rest of the public's going to have.
Yeah. Grant, you might just inform people, you know, our standing call with them every week on Thursdays?
We actually have a couple of calls. One is an internal call where we discuss any issues that we have outstanding. I know Philip's involved in that call. I am. A couple of counselors are, our attorney's team, SRC representatives and staff. counselors are, our attorney's team, SRC representatives and staff. We also have every Thursday at 3:00 PM call where we discuss timelines and what's happening or what information needs to be provided. We do that every Thursday. It's anywhere from a 15-minute call to a 30-minute call. It just depends on what has to be done or discussed that week. I think I participated in probably 30 of those calls over the past, because sometimes we've had one or two a week, depending on what's going on.
Right.
So we do have that communication. And I think, as I mentioned, they were here, not in person. We had them on a Zoom and asked questions at that time. That was months ago, was last fall, but...
So Grant, I'm going to ask some questions that I know the answer to, but the public asks these regularly. Some people that are just starting to listen in, some that have been listening for years. Why do we not just take the property, knock the structure of the stair and build a park? Why do we not knock it down, start and do something different? Why aren't we doing that or why haven't we done that?
Well, I think the outstanding dollars on that project, the $5 million that have already been spent, would have to be paid by someone. The town would have to tear it down. We could probably get a little bit of money from salvaging some of that material, but there's still a cost with that. And then frankly, a property zone for that type of use, you know, a dog park or a park probably won't provide the return to the community, probably won't be seen by the business community on Main Street in the same light as a hotel. I don't know if that answers what you're...
Well, and the other question I asked is, why don't we just take it?
If we took it, it would take 18 to 24 months. We could do that, but it ties it up in legal, and once again, attorneys meet every week and discuss those things, and it goes to judges, and that's just a long time sink. Now, some would say, well, I didn't do that two years ago. That's a great question. Maybe we should have done it two years ago. But I think we found another developer and have been working in good faith with them, trying to get to this point, trying to get to the point of having a finalized, finished hotel there on Main Street.
If this doesn't work, then we're going to be faced with those same sets of questions. What do we do with it? Right?
Yep.
And, you know, if you file bankruptcy now, and you're looking at 18 to 24 months, chances are that steal is no good at that point. So even if you could refinance it two years from now, now your costs just went up significantly.
I think the one thing that I haven't mentioned a lot here tonight, there's a phrase in the real estate world called a broken project. Any project that starts and stops with whatever problem or issues like this, that's considered a broken project. That has a different stipulation with it when you go to a bank asking for financing to start that project again. Couple that with changing interest rates and costs going up. That's why that project has taken this long. I think had the first developer finished it, done what was supposed to be done, we'd all be enjoying that. I don't know that we're going to stay in it, but we'd be reaping the benefit of that in our commercial district and benefiting our businesses that are on Main Street. But I think that can't be understated, the concept of that broken project.
Come on up.
Hi, Curtis Miller, 1700 North Wickham Avenue. So we will be in second position to the primary mortgage holder. So in the event that we have dispersed 1, 1.5 million for this project and for unforeseen circumstances, this goes sideways, the value's not there. So we are out that 1, 1.5 million is the only outcome that the SRC now has 1.5 million less to work with. The town doesn't have to backfill any of that money at all?
Yeah.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, no other questions for the council. I'm going to go ahead and...
I'm just going to make a comment if I can. I think we're heading towards a vote. I just want to make a comment. I'm going to vote to approve this evening in order to give Hotel Equities opportunity to continue their progress. If we meet again in two weeks on this, or if it's pushed to a meeting beyond that, they'll still have to deliver according to the things we've been talking about here. And there's, and also for me personally, subject to them participating in the next meeting that's in person, or we've had them on screen at least twice during our council meetings. It'd be nice to have them here in person. But that's how I'm voting this evening, so everyone's aware.
And I might add that I don't think there's anybody up here at the desk that has not had some of the same questions, if not exactly the same questions that have been raised here tonight. We've had some heated discussion from time to time on what should we do? What should we have done? Hindsight's always 2020. You know, 18 months ago, it was suggested that we do foreclose, but some of us held out. And now, you know, is that, looking back, was that the right thing to do? But we are close, and you don't want to stop it. At least I don't think we want to stop at this point.
And I would add to that, you're using 18 to 24 months. We have a billboard on 16th Street that we've been trying to get control of in a lawsuit for...
Over two years.
It's more than that.
Three years.
Five.
And between our council that's here and other attorneys that advise us in specific to real estate, because of COVID, because of other things, and we all are sick and tired of talking about COVID, but it's a reality, we thought we'd be through this, that billboard by now. And we're not. And so you're using 18 and 24 months, and that's been our part of the conversation all along, as Gary referenced. Both, and most of this has actually been redevelopment, doing their job, which we appoint them to do. But we've certainly had opportunity to ask questions and have input. So it's more than the 18 to 24 months. That's for certain.
I feel that we have control over that, over these funds with the fact that we're going to be filing the legal documents that we need to, and that we have control over that escrow agreement. Obviously, the monies will not be released unless if we have the approvals through the council here or clerk treasurer, and it will be done after they are approved with their current, with their first mortgage to be able to move forward. Other than that, if that does not go through, then we clearly are not going to be releasing those funds to anyone at that point in time, so.
I'll just add, I think with Councilor Pettigo's comments, it was, maybe you all can figure out, maybe there was a voice that was saying, let's go after it. I'm not going to say that was me, but it was. I'm beyond frustrated with this. I've publicly stated at meetings that I'm frustrated with this project. And I'm going to vote to approve this this evening, but the ball's in their court and they need to answer some questions. They need to be at a meeting and answer those questions for us. If that's not going to happen, then I'm not going to vote to approve this at our next meeting, whatever that may be.
March 13, I believe, right?
That's the schedule at this point, but it could be delayed if needed.
I want to personally thank every person that came up and spoke tonight. I think it's good to get public input on decisions like this. It's a tough decision to make in terms of, you know, how do we protect the best interests of the town of Speedway? And then also promote development. So we're, we all sit up here to make those types of decisions and we're moving forward. Again, thank you very much for all the comments tonight, and I appreciate all the counselors all chiming in and giving their points on it. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of ordinance 1371, authorizing the town of Speedway, Indiana to issue its taxable economic development revenue notes, series 2023 Will Shaw Hotel Project Loan, and proceeds therefore to Hotel Equity Speedway owner in the LLC and approving the authorization, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is the approval of claims and utility adjustments. Phillip?
Thank you. We have claims only for this session, and take your questions if you have any, but would request your approval of them.
Mr. President, we approve the claims January 21st to February 24, 2023, as presented.
Motion and a second. Any discussion of the claims? None. On call for the vote, all is in favor of the claims as submitted by the town clerk treasurer, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Next on the agenda is a report from the town manager.
I've spoken a lot tonight.
You're going to need some water, aren't you?
I just want to make two real quick comments. I'm proud to announce that we're entering the third session of our inaugural Resident Academy course, started a couple, almost a month ago. Our third session will be next Tuesday night at the water plant. That is an application process. People applied for that class to learn about town operations. I think it's went very well. We had 32 sign up. The first night, we had 27 show up. Last week, I think people were out of town. We only had 21 or 22 show. But it definitely is a good program. We're going to continue offering this, once again, to try to build awareness and understanding of the town operations, the issues we have. It's really cool to see residents standing in the street garage, looking at the equipment we have and understanding, oh, this is how they do that, or why do they do this? This is why. It's just, it's been a good program. I've done it in other communities that I've worked in, and I think this is going to be a big hit. It will continue to be a big hit. The second thing is, I did want to thank all the staff, particularly Cheryl McElroy, who put on the State of the Town address on the 13th two weeks ago. Wonderful attendance. I think we had about 100 people, I think, show up. The Lions showed up to provide refreshments. Great comments from IMS, Doug Bowles and Dr. Trebley. Really a positive meeting that I thought shared a lot of good information. If you haven't seen that, that is on our YouTube channel, SCTV YouTube channel. Please go ahead and check that out. The only final comment I want to have is, now that we have our new website, we are starting to load full council packets on the website the Friday before the council meeting. So this agenda was in its entirety included on the website as of last Friday. So if you have any questions and you want to download that, feel free. There is a video after the fact. I also do kind of a summary real quick video that we put out on Facebook. We're trying to improve that communication, transparency, education about what is happening, because Speedway's a great community, and we want to be proud and discuss what we're working on. Thank you. That's all I have for tonight.
Perfect. Counselor Gary Pettigo?
Nothing to report on.
Counselor Eileen Fisher?
I have nothing.
Counselor David Lindsey?
Nothing for this evening.
Counselor Gary Ricks?
Just a couple of quick things. This Saturday is the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast. It starts at 8:00 AM, goes till about 11:00, I believe. And it's, if you don't know what the Lions do here in Speedway, you're not really looking very closely. Their fingerprints are all over town in our parks and our schools, and like they were here for the State of the Town, helping to make people feel welcomed. And to that point, welcome again to Phillip. Phillip, what's not on the agenda is normally our clerk treasurer gives a report. So we approve claims. Tell us how your first couple, first month on the job's gone.
Well, thank you, Gary, for that. Well, it's been exciting, actually. When I first talked to Jacob about the potential for the job, it sounded like it would be interesting, and I had no idea, obviously, how interesting the first month would be. I've got a great staff in the clerk treasurer's office, and it's an excellent opportunity to learn all about the town and the different departments and the great servants that we have. And so I appreciated the faith that's been put in me to take care of the town's finances, and I hope that I won't let you down.
Great. Thank you, Phillip.
One comment I want to make about Phillip. We have a weekly Friday meeting, right, Phillip? I love the question. He asks lots of questions, and I think that's good. So thank you for meeting with me and discussing and trying to get up to speed, because we got a lot going on.
Absolutely. Final report, I just want to, again, thank everybody for showing up tonight and asking pertinent questions in relationship to this project. This council takes this project very seriously. We vetted it multiple times, different solutions, and, you know, and hopefully that will have this project, you know, we start building for the future. I think, you know, when you look at businesses on Main Street and businesses in town, and especially when you look at blank, open property, you always look for the highest and best use. I mean, you can always, you know, get, you know, small pockets here and there. But I think that with Dalar going in, one of the very first buildings on Main Street, that type of momentum and also sets a standard, a high bar for the rest of the street. It also tells the public and contractors, builders and developers that, you know, the town of Speedway is serious about redevelopment. And for a long time, this town fell asleep. And sometimes that, it's a lot, it's easier just to ride on what you've got. But it's hard, as we know, in developing to the highest and best use. And it takes a team of individuals and everyone working together to communicate to the citizens of the town of Speedway exactly what we're doing and trying to achieve, and we will continue to do that. And if the public has any questions, feel free to ask your counselor. Feel free to ask Grant. You know, we're open for those questions, and, you know, we can lend that information that we're learning every day in terms of where we're headed in relationship to those projects and future projects. You know, it's not, this isn't the only project on our plate right now. We have several other ones that we're in the process of developing too. So just to let the public know, that is an important aspect to that. It is 8:08. I'm going to go ahead and call for adjournment, and thank you again.